Thank you for joining the Henry Ford College Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. This is January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We're starting right on time. This is a virtual meeting on Zoom. Meeting number is nine three one six one three nine six five two six. This meeting is called The Order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Patrick Diambrazio.
Here, Dearborn, Michigan.
Mr. Hussein Barry.
Here in Dearborn, Michigan.
Ms. Roxanne McDonald.
Here in Dearborn.
Adam Moszab here in Dearborn, Michigan. Mary, Ms. Mary Petlicoff.
Here in Dearborn.
Ms. Irene Watts.
Here in Dearborn, Michigan.
And Chair James Thor.
Here in Dearborn, Michigan. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the Henry Ford College Meeting Regular Board of Trustees Meeting on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Recommended action: make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
All right, we have a motion from Trustee Barry, support from Trustee Petlicoff to accept the minutes. Are there any corrections? All right, I'm not seeing anyone raise a hand or anything about any correction. Can I get a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Diambrazio.
Yes.
Mr. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Moszab, yes. Ms. Petlicoff.
Yes.
Ms. Watts.
Yes.
Chair Thor.
Yes. All right, next item.
Next item, President's items.
President Cavallone, I would ask, when you're going through your items, let us know if there are certain points you want us to ask questions, or if you want to go through all of your items first before we give you any questions, all right?
That is completely all right. I appreciate the direction. And I say Happy New Year and welcome to all of you. It's good to see your faces. In two thousand and twenty-one, we made it through two thousand and twenty. And I hope that this two thousand and twenty-one is going well for you. I first want to say congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman. I know that you have taken the gavel, and I saw how it happened virtually. And I thought that was a pretty slick way to do it. And I will say, though, that to all of my colleagues and citizens who are in attendance today, one of the things I really enjoy doing is having that passing of the gavel in person and taking a photograph of that. So I do hope that as we progress through two thousand and twenty-one, that we get to a place where we can have that occasion. And as I mentioned to all the trustees recently, that I also like to continue what we started as a tradition only a year ago, and that was to take a team photograph of all of us trustees, the president and the superintendent, and I anticipate being able to do that again. And when we do that, we will have a new member of our team. Welcome and congratulate on her election, Trustee Irene Watts. Welcome to the College Board. And it's good to have back, after a long one year, one month hiatus, have Trustee Adam Moszab back with us. It's good to see you again, Trustee Moszab. For all of you, I'm glad to see you, and I'm glad it's the winter semester. We are underway, and it is another strange semester in the time of a pandemic, but we are making progress. And we're continuing a lot of the important traditions that we have here at the college. One of those is the State of the College Address. And this will have been the second that we conducted, very much like the Board is conducting its own business on Zoom and through alternative means of communication. During that Zoom State of the College, I saw several of you attend, and I appreciate that very much. We did have the occasion to bid farewell to your erstwhile colleague, Trustee Mary Lane. And in a surprise and exciting development, Trustee Lane serenaded the State of the College audience with her rendition of our school song, which was, as I mentioned, a wonderful surprise. We also, during that State of the College, launched our, and I would say relaunched, our Alumni Association effort. We thought long and hard about whether we wanted to wait for that to happen until the pandemic subsided, and we elected not to wait because we knew this was important, and we were having demand from our alumni who wanted to get more involved. And when you have that kind of demand, it's never a good idea to make it wait. We also continued what we changed in our typical State of the College. We changed some of that delivery in September to bring in more voices than simply my own. And that was a success in September, so we augmented it in January. And we brought in voices from other colleagues. And one of the great parts of offering others an opportunity to address the State of the College audience is when our students give testimonials. We did that again in January, and it was a wonderful addition to the State of the College address, where these students outlined how they have persevered and continued their educational endeavors despite the pandemic, and how the college has supported them by giving them support and encouragement. And it was great to have some of my teammates called out by name for doing that. At the State of the College, I also was proud to say that the Michigan Legislature, in its lame duck session at the end of December, did what we had hoped they would do but weren't completely sure. And that would be to authorize the construction phase of our expansion of the Technical Education Building here on campus. And now that that did happen, a lame duck bill passed and was signed by the governor, we've come to a place where we have crossed the finish line, at least from the point of getting the okay to do this. And I mentioned at the State of the College, this was a years-long effort, and I enlisted many, many of my colleagues that deserve a lot of credit about that. And I'd like to just highlight that two of those are your friends and colleagues on our cabinet, and those are Vice President Sakowski and Vice President Reginald Best. I also noted, in the State of the College, a more serious and solemn point. And that is that we are going to continue evaluating and addressing any issues we have in our culture as it relates to our campus culture in understanding and respecting diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'm proud to say that the first, most important step, to be first, is a campus climate survey, and that took a long time to get right, and a lot of feedback that Vice President Best and myself took. And now we have launched, on MLP Day yesterday, our Campus Climate Survey. All of you should have received that. And I talked to all of my colleagues who are here tonight and students who happen to be watching you tonight. Please do take that survey. It is a great, important first step for us to find out where we're strong, where we're not strong, and how we can advance this college on this important issue. You also know, Trustee, let me stop there, Mr. Chairman. Any questions on the State of the College? Okay. You also may know that one thing we attempted to bridge the gap that this pandemic has caused us in not being physically with each other is something we're calling First Fridays, where the first Friday of each month, I hold an hour-long meeting open to any member of our community, whether it be faculty, staff, or student, with literally no agenda except to open up the mics and let people talk about what they're experiencing, what they're happy about, what they're unhappy about. And we had that already here in January. And if you didn't attend, I would just like to relate a touching story that one of our students surprised me with and really buoyed my spirits in explaining to me. Now, this student's name is Rachel. And, you know, we have eleven thousand students at this college, and at any given one of these first Fridays, a student may show up and start talking, which is fine, although I just, you know, sometimes I don't know who they are. And so this woman introduced herself as Rachel and was really great in explaining how the college has made her feel welcome and supported through the pandemic. And she said something that I think all of you trustees should take to heart, and it was, "This has been really hard, but we can tell the college is doing as best as it can, and we appreciate all the support and communication that the college and leadership is giving to us students, and we feel like we're still going to make it through." And then Rachel left us with something that really was heartwarming, in my opinion. I, at the beginning of the meeting, related a funny anecdote about how I handle my seven-year-old son's temper tantrums. And when Rachel decided to talk a bit, she mentioned that she had a child. And then she also let us know that she had dropped out of high school, never thought college was something that she could do or possibly succeed at, but that she was doing both of those, doing college and succeeding at it for and because of her daughter, and that she felt like Henry Ford College was an option. In fact, a wonderful option for her to be able to lift herself and her family up. And as a mother, as a student through the pandemic, it really did lift my spirits. And I know the employees and faculty who were there also had that. So that's a small pitch to you, that if you ever are interested, First Fridays are easy to remember when they are. They're the first Friday of each month, and they're usually at ten o'clock. And check your email on if you'd like to attend. Any questions on First Friday? Next topic. And, Mr. Chairman, I do want to inaugurate your first meeting at the college by making it one of my shorter reports, so we're more than halfway through. The return to campus is an important thing for this Board, and I always like to give it updates on anything going on on that front. We will begin returning to the small number of our classes that must occur face-to-face next week. Next week, we're already into our winter semester, but next week, we'll be starting those small numbers of sections in socially-distanced and COVID-compliant ways next week. I also wanted to tell the Board that I've been getting a lot of questions from faculty and staff about the vaccine. And I no doubt know that you are receiving those. I've just recently talked to Dr. Malaco on this topic, and I have to say, he and I both are at a distinct disadvantage because we really don't have much to offer our faculty and staff, and frankly, you, our supervisors, our elected trustees, anything more than what we're hearing from the same avenues of information that the public and you have. But here's what I know. Currently, instructors at the college are not in the 1B priority category that public school teachers are. Even those instructors at colleges, like Henry Ford College, who have and would eventually have high school students from a public school system, that is still not changing it. Now, I've asked the Governor's Office to reconsider that. We've drafted a letter from the Michigan Community College Association asking for reconsideration of that. I've talked with President McDonald of the AFT Local sixteen fifty here. He and I are of the same mind on that. And we're all pushing to try to get our faculty to be moved up into that 1B area. And at the current status, the answer is no. And it's not because the Governor's Office doesn't think that it's a valid request, it's because there simply is a shortage of the vaccine. Now, and I see Trustee Moszab shaking his head or nodding his head, and he probably knows more about this than any of us working at a healthcare facility or entity. But my understanding is that the way that citizens, whether they be employees of Henry Ford College or not, the way that they gain access to the vaccine is through the county that they live in. And I believe that the State of Michigan has given that authority from itself over to the counties to distribute that. And I've heard varying stories about how that's happening throughout the state, just because I have family and friends in other counties in our state. But currently, I have no more news than what I've just recounted, which is all public information. But I know faculty and staff are interested in this question, and I do plan to issue a statement to all our staff and faculty to recount what I just did now. Any questions on return to campus from the trustees?
Trustee Petlicoff.
I don't have a question. I just have something to add to that because Beaumont Oakwood, or Beaumont Dearborn, I don't know what we're calling it. I still call Macy's Hudson's. Is opening up a vaccine clinic. And my chart with Beaumont Health Systems, you're already in the randomized reach-out if you're sixty-five and older. So just to let people know that if their staff at the college, they might be able to expedite an opportunity to get vaccinated once they have the vaccines available, but that is still a problem.
Yeah, my understanding is that it is being split, the responsibility. Trustee Moszab helped me out on this one, where the hospitals are taking certain groups, and the county health departments are taking other groups. And that's how they're kind of splitting this. Is that correct?
That's correct, Chair Thor. The hospitals have pledged to the state that they would take the group of sixty-five and over to vaccinate. The educators, I think they're still with Wayne County or with the county that they follow. So considering the college is part of the educators' group, I know that they're not considered as schoolteachers or school staff, but we still have to wait for Wayne County to let us know when they will have a timetable for our faculty. Now, I'll tell you, everybody is bombarded. Beaumont actually IT system crashed last week when we had so much load of requests for the vaccine. So the authorities are saying to be patient, and I think with more help from the federal government and the state government, that we will have some type of timeline, hopefully next month, for the vaccines to be distributed. And I think we're in their minds. So especially that back-to-face-to-face education will really help the economy to come back as well. So that's a very important point. Now, we could ask healthcare systems if the college is willing to partner with these and perhaps, you know, bypass the county, but I don't know if you want to go that route. But that's up to President Cavallone's disposal to see. Because Beaumont has been approached by companies like Ford and others to see if they can vaccinate their employees as well.
Well, from conversations I had had with President Cavallone, he had mentioned that himself and President McDonald had been approaching different groups to see what we could do for the college. And we appreciate that. We know that everyone's probably asking to be moved up a little bit, and it can't hurt to ask, so I appreciate that's been done. President Cavallone, you talked about our instructors, specifically the medical fields, nursing and other areas. What's the status of vaccinations for them?
You know, it was a little unclear, Mr. Chairman, until I had a conversation with President McDonald, who recounted that he was receiving some inquiries from at least one of his members that they were, they being instructor, were in the healthcare settings and concerned about not getting the vaccine. And, you know, I was planning to communicate with the hospital administration, advocating that these individuals be seen as healthcare workers, at least for the priority setting, rather than instructors. And I wanted to make that point, also to apply to our students. But I was happy to note that before I could even do that inquiry, the instructor/member of the union contacted both President McDonald and myself and noted that the hospital setting was, in fact, vaccinating instructors, and I also believe students. I haven't heard an addition from that. So my belief is that these healthcare settings, where our students and staff are doing both healthcare and the education, that they're being seen as medical workers such that they are being vaccinated.
Mr. McDonald, could you hold on till we get to citizen participation? Thanks.
So the next topic is the last topic, and it's the idea of tuition-free college. And you've seen that I've pushed really hard as an advocate for this. The first program in our state was called Futures for Frontliners, and I've been excited about it. And I know some of you have asked me about details on it. So I do plan to continually update you throughout the year, but also during these presentations. And two topics now. One is just how successful we are getting in making this a valuable opportunity for students. And then, second, a review of statistics. So how is it becoming so successful? You saw that we were proud to be the first community college to coordinate with a four-year institution, that being Eastern Michigan University, in organizing a way for Futures for Frontliner students to graduate from Henry Ford College and then move on to Eastern Michigan University in a nearly tuition-free process at the four-year level also. And I'm really excited to say that now at least two other community colleges have drawn the same deal with Eastern Michigan University. I'm excited about that because we're all in the strong belief that more citizens with more degrees is better for the entire state and certainly for the region. So we're leading the way in showing how connections between our institution, four-year institutions, are the way that we, everyone should be behaving. And I'm excited about the team that helped us do that. And I'll just tease a little bit of information on here. I hope to be announcing a similar agreement with another four-year partner here in the next two weeks. So I'm excited about the Futures for Frontliners program because it really is a shot in the arm, and no pun intended. It really is an opportunity to try to help those that are most deserving during this pandemic. Let me give you some statistics about that. The state's estimating that one hundred and seventeen thousand Michigan citizens identified themselves as essential workers who wanted to take advantage of the Futures for Frontliners program. Remember that the deadline was the last day of two thousand and twenty. So that application process is closed, and we had a little more than one hundred and fifteen thousand across the state. Of that, five thousand five hundred and twenty-six identified Henry Ford College as the school that they wanted to attend in the program. I'll give you some context with that. Right now, we have eleven thousand six hundred students enrolled at Henry Ford College for this semester. So little less than half of the number that we have enrolled now is the quantity of people who wanted to take advantage of this program and attend Henry Ford College. Now, of those, we have one thousand two hundred and sixty-six of them who are now enrolled in the winter term for Henry Ford College. Now, interestingly, of that twelve hundred and sixty-six, some and the majority are eligible for the Futures for Frontliners program, but some are not. In fact, over four hundred people said, "I'm a Futures for Frontliners student. I want to attend Henry Ford College." And they were found to not be eligible for the tuition program, either because they didn't work a certain amount of time or they didn't complete the FAFSA or the other eligibility requirements. But they still took the step and enrolled at Henry Ford College, which is an ancillary benefit to what we're all trying to achieve here. And then if you break down that twelve hundred and sixty-six individuals who applied for the program and did enroll, you have over seven hundred and fifty students who were already at Henry Ford College. And that group will tell you, those were people who were in the pandemic, working on the front lines, and are benefiting from this program, staying at Henry Ford College. The next group of three hundred and almost seventy, three hundred and sixty-nine students, this is the group that I'm the most proud of. These are students who are enrolled at Henry Ford College now through this program and who previously had been at Henry Ford College but stopped attending. I mean, this is the gold standard for a college administrator, is having someone who attended here, stopped, and then we got them back in. It's really exciting. And then, very closely behind that, one of the more exciting things is who actually came to HFC as a new student through this program. And we're excited that one hundred and forty-three of those people are at HFC now in the winter. I'll continue to update that number, and I hope to continue to grow that twelve hundred and sixty number because, of course, that is the number inside of the five thousand five hundred that applied and wanted to attend HFC. And some may still enroll in future terms. They simply just had to apply by the end of the year last year. Last topic, and then I'll ask for questions on free college programs. And I'll be done with my report, Mr. Chairman. Is we're coming really close up to April, when we expect that the State of Michigan will outline and roll out its next free college program, which is called MyReconnect, and M-I as in short for Michigan. You know that that program is just like Futures for Frontliners. It's a free college program, except this is strategically focused for individuals who are age twenty-five or more and don't already have a college certificate or degree. And we're looking really hard to learn the lessons of the free college program in Futures for Frontliners and apply that to the MyReconnect that will roll out in April and hopefully have a really great return for us, maybe in the summer, but certainly in the fall. Any questions on Futures for Frontliners, MyReconnect, or any other thing I talked about?
Trustee McDonald.
Of those, more than fifty-five hundred students that had chosen HFC as their preferred school, is there a deadline when they need to enroll to get the Future for Frontliners program?
Kind of, Trustee McDonald. They have a certain number of terms that they have to use the benefit. So suppose they waited, and I believe it's four years. But if they waited until three years down the road, they'd have to get as many credits as they could until that sunset provision that stopped happened. And whether they had graduated or not, that would end the benefit.
Are they, do you know if they're being made fully aware of that?
Yeah, that's an interesting question, and we've been working really hard at that. Both the State of Michigan and our recruiting staff have been directly communicating with them in multiple ways, both emails, and the State of Michigan now is using text messages. And I can tell you that a large percentage of the folks who are, who are, who have applied but are not eligible, are not getting their FAFSA in. And that's, we've always known that's been a problem, and we're working hard on that also. But if they apply and they haven't finished their FAFSA and they correct that error, my understanding is that they can still then take advantage of the program if they truly were essential workers. So that's one of the things I think we're finding is the lowest-hanging fruit there.
Thank you.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Yeah, a couple of things. We, I know we talked about the way the Future for Frontliners grant was working was that if they weren't an in-district student to begin with, that they were going to have to pay the difference. Did, are we able to help address that for those students? Maybe the brand-new ones who applied? The ones who are already students maybe said, "Hey, look, I'm going to at least get a break" if they were out-of-district students on what I've been paying and were okay with moving forward or were using Pell Grants applied? Were the new students especially, did we, did we find opportunities to give them, steer them towards other forms of finances?
Yes, in fact, that, the primary answer to that has been our almost, I think last year it was six hundred thousand dollars of scholarships granted. And if you think about it, it doesn't take much to close that gap as far as money is concerned, because our, the rates are already so much lower than any four-year institution. And that the person you identify, the out-of-district student, is getting, the Futures for Frontliners program will cover up to the in-district amount. So the answer is yes, and it's the traditional scholarship funds that we distribute.
And the other question was about testing, especially for the new students. Did we have a lot of those students, especially if they hadn't been in school for a while, are, does a Future for Frontliners, I know, isn't going to cover the cost of remediation? And if those students weren't able to take the entry-level courses because they were behind? I mean, did we have an issue with that at all?
Not that I've heard, Trustee Petlicoff. And the college has been doing really good work since before my time here in limiting the amount of time a student is taking developmental courses and not getting any college credit. And I haven't heard any problems on that front here. Of course, every student, whether they be Futures for Frontliners or not, have to go through the analysis that you just asked. And I'm confident that if there were significant problems there, I would have made aware of it. And I have not been.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Watts.
So I saw the announcement regarding the Michigan Reconnect. Is that something that's going to be exclusive to Henry Ford College? Or is that going to be open to other colleges in the state? Do we have any information on that?
Yeah, it's, it is open to all citizens of the State of Michigan. And it is open to all community colleges in the State of Michigan. And it is funded, hopefully for many, many years, but funded certainly for the fiscal year we're in now. And well, I'm interested to see, I really am interested to see whether the demand for that will exceed the demand we saw with Futures for Frontliners. Futures for Frontliners, as I mentioned, was a statewide program that ended up getting about one hundred and seventeen thousand applicants. And for context, the state estimated there were six hundred and fifty thousand people out there who were essential workers. So you're down to about one-sixth of the people. You're down to about one sixth of the people who had the chance applied. Um I don't know yet how many twenty five year olds or older in the state of Michigan don't already have a college certificate or degree. Um but I'd like to see if we can do better than one sixth across the state who try to take advantage of it.
Well, and then the follow up is that one of the services that they were saying that they would be providing those students would be um on campus childcare. Is that going to be a free childcare or is it going to be a discounted childcare, it wasn't specific on the news release?
Yeah, are you speaking of, are you speaking of the governor's press conference today?
Yeah.
Yeah, trustee Watts, I saw that too and I my eyes uh, you know, eyebrows went up when I saw that also and I was also. Uh digging for detail and didn't find it.
Okay.
So so I I was of the same mind you were really, they're gonna do childcare for these people who are doing My Reconnect. Um you may be aware that um there there's a childcare facility right on our on our facility um that we hope will be ready to answer that need, of course, there's also one right across the street. And um I didn't see any details, but uh it looked to me pretty clear that they were going to devote resources to students that um could identify themselves as that being their their um their barrier to college access.
Okay, thank you.
And. Yeah, I just want to make sure when you talk about childcare that's on our campus, it is a private owned. Uh entity, we are, we do not have any uh control over it other than we've allowed them to lease the property. So it's not within our purview to um. Control what they do with the uh childcare facility in regards to students.
All right, thank you very much for the report, next item please, Karen.
Next item is discussion item, uh fiscal year twenty twenty one midyear budget adjustment. Board report number forty five seventy seven, Vice President Satavsky.
Uh yes, thank you, uh um. Board of trustees, that seems like it's been forever since we did this first go around with the uh. With the budget that was back in May of of twenty twenty and all the balls were up in the air, we were taking our best shot at it at that time. We were hearing terrible news out of Lansing regarding state appropriations. Enrollment, as we know, we were all online at that time in May for the winter semester. So we had made some assumptions to uh get us toward a a balanced budget, which included a number of issues in the expense area and some very conservative estimates in revenue. Uh so what we're here tonight is to uh. Do the midyear adjustments, revenues are approximately going to be increased by four point seven million dollars and expenses. In the neighborhood of four point five million dollars. So and then, so I will give you the highlights, but at this point I will have Brian Bame, our uh my. Budget guru extraordinaire, call him what you what you will, but he will go into a brief presentation on the areas of revenue and. What we have done to revenue as well as some of the areas of expense, so if Brian can be unmuted.
Uh we started out uh this fiscal year with a uh budgeted revenues over expenses of three thousand dollars. And with the changes that we're discussing, we're going to move that to a hundred and fifty three thousand. So from three thousand to a hundred and fifty three thousand and that adjustment is a hundred and fifty thousand. On the revenue side, the biggest um item is the state aid, we anticipated basically a twenty percent cut. Uh in state aid, which uh did not uh come to fruition, hope uh. Fortunately, and so we're moving uh the state aid about four, almost four point seven million. Four point seven million dollars additionally, um and then we also anticipated that we might have an issue with uh property taxes. And I I believe that we budgeted it down a couple percent. And that was um also, at at least as as we're seeing uh uh property taxes coming in. We don't have an issue there, uh we're going to in increase that by about seven hundred and fifty thousand. We uh the interest rates uh pretty much uh crashed in terms of. Uh rates on our our investments, so we've we've reduced income, uh interest income by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And other institutional revenues also going down by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and a lot of that has to do to do with um. Uh rentals to uh Dearborn Public Schools. And then then in terms of an of uh other revenue, uh we had anticipated. Uh a higher summer. Than normal, just because we're our spring was was canceled and uh we didn't know exactly how that would would work out and. We are increasing the budget by about seven hundred thousand dollars uh is that was better than we had um had budgeted. Then in terms of overall enrollment, we've we've reduced that about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars because we budgeted it about. Five point five down and we're going to be uh closer to, I don't know, maybe seven uh between. Uh the the winter and the fall, fall came in uh better than anticipated and and winters coming in a little worse than than anticipated. So the the total of all the revenue items is uh almost four point uh seven million dollars is uh. Uh Mr. Setkowski said. On the expense side, uh we had uh made a number of assumptions in terms of. Uh uh contract with sixteen fifty and and when that would happen and how how uh how many. Faculty would retire and and a number of different things, so none of that was reflected in our our original budget for uh twenty one. And so we were adding uh one point one million dollars related to the VASP of the twenty two uh faculty members that took VASP. Um and then other related uh uh timing issues related to faculty, adding another million dollars there. Um and when we originally did our budget, we had to. Uh we took a number of positions that were open. And did not budget for them for the current for uh fiscal twenty one because. We basically didn't have, we didn't have the funding to do it based on where we thought the state aid was going to be. So we're adding, we're adding that back, it's a million one sixty four. And then there were some um non-budget, uh excuse me, non-payroll uh cuts that we made that we are also. Putting back into place which uh bounced about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then uh a kind of a a net um adjustment is the. A change in mandatory transfers, the biggest item there being uh we had not uh issued. The bond for the um energy managed, energy management bonds, and so the funding to uh. To to pay the bonds and the interest off was not reflected in our our mandatory transfers in the original budget, so we're adding it down here. So the total expense modifications is about four point five million dollars, again, getting us to um a new bottom line of a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. Um I guess I'll open up up to uh for for any questions before members may have.
Be be before you do that, I had one comment that Brian made, that had to do with the fact, you see that not item that's faculty adjustment due to timing. Of VASP staffing and enrollment. When we were negotiating with sixteen fifty, the anticipation was that the. VASP would take effect at the fall of twenty twenty, in in other words. The faculty who took it would have been gone, would have taken their uh retirement or left the left the college, I don't say retirement, left the college. Prior to the start of the fall semester. Uh a number of faculty members, because of the timing and because of the sixteen fifty contracts approval, didn't happen until August. We extended that to allow a number of full-time faculty to work in the fall because we just couldn't find replacements at that time. So uh they worked for the fall and then re a number of them retired then at the end of the fall semester rather than doing it at the beginning of the fall semester.
All right, questions for either Mr. Sukowski or Mr. Bame, trustee Pelishkov?
Uh those reinstatements of positions at a little over a million dollars, was that like across the board in every um? You know, union?
It was a number of vacancies, I have it in my hand here, I knew you'd ask it, so I pulled it out of my pile.
I don't miss stuff.
They are, they range from uh area from enrollment to uh facilities, financial services, human resources. Uh Registrar's Office when it comes to an enrollment, um institutional research, it's a again, but we looked at all of those when we put the budget together. And pretty much said, well, I think we're going to be able to at least defer some of these uh for the year, keep them open. And then the cabinet went through uh back. October, September, October, November to identify and prioritize those that uh. Met met the criteria of being uh effective and and needed for the campus regarding student services.
They are not all filled yet though, correct?
No, absolutely not, no, they're not.
I was gonna say, I know I haven't seen.
No, no.
Uh a name, so I'm, we're holding, we're holding spots for them, okay.
Example, uh trustee is the, there were a couple of positions in the maintenance custodial area in uh. Uh Rubens area when it comes to uh construction and that since. Since we were not on campus in the fall, a number of those projects that we normally would do in the fall weren't done, we had vacancies, so we let them ride until. Uh until now, in which we know come this late winter, spring, a lot of that will get started, and in fact, it's already getting started.
Okay, just wanna, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I had a question about the issuance of the bond, has that, I I heard a comment about it being delayed or not being issued.
No, no, they are issued, the bonds are issued, we have the thirteen million plus sitting in our uh in our. Investments, if you will, entities and in fact, uh the I E M P project has started and in fact, we've already spent. Out of the twenty three million dollars, we've already procured equipment, materials, chillers, uh. Uh et cetera, to the tune of around uh eight million dollars.
That's great to hear, so I would also assume that we we got this bond at a historical low rate.
Yes, I can't recall, I think.
One point seven one.
Yeah, it was, what was that, Brian?
One point seven one was the effective rate.
Yeah, that'll keep our interest payments nice and low, so.
That, and that's what I think you're referring to that you heard when bonds were mentioned.
Right.
Was not included in the original budget, was that nine hundred and seventy one thousand was the interest?
Right.
Correct?
Yeah, interest, yeah. Interest and principal that would be paid uh this fiscal year. Um we we didn't issue the bonds until uh I think uh late June.
And it's only paid annually, so it's.
Yeah.
There's, there's uh two interest payments and one principal payment a year.
That's what I wondered, all right.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much for the report.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
Next item is as action items, uh citizen participation, any member of the public who wishes to submit a written request. To provide a public statement during the public comment portion of the meeting. Will provide the electronic request to Adam Mosup, M A A D E L. At H F C C dot E D U by seven ten P M on January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. The public comment emails will be led by a designated board member, so the comment might be heard by those electronically attending the meeting. The board rules for the content and the length of the public statements remain as of the meeting was held in person. As of right now, I do not have any emails for public comments.
I know that uh Mr. John McDonald uh had his hand up earlier, thank you very much for for holding on to the comment. And I'm sure that either Mr. Dimitri or Mr. Long will unmute you, there you go.
Hey, thank you, um I just wanted to make uh respond a little bit to President Cavelluna's discussion of COVID. Uh he has been very instrumental in working the state as best he can. And so has A F T Michigan, who has our president Dave Hecker has a lot of influence in the governor's office. And it's unfortunate that the state does not recognize that there is a small cohort of faculty, it's not every faculty member. Eighty percent could stay at remote distant the learning. But maybe five, ten percent of faculty at every community college are going to be exposed potentially to COVID, whether they're teaching biological sciences. Whether they're teaching certain culinary arts or career. Um but there's been a right major effort to get into that with the state. The other thing I'd point out is that there are a variety of places you can put your name on a list for a COVID. Um vaccine, uh one would be the hospital that you're associated with. And it wouldn't be just Beaumont, it could be Henry Ford Hospital, it could be the Ascension District uh Hospitals. Myers itself is going to be very influential in uh distributing uh the vaccines, so. You know, I am just a tad over sixty five. Depending on, yeah, thank you, thank you very much, I thought it was gonna be, you know, uh. Oh, I tell you, uh Mary, you're very kind to me, the um. Uh but the uh, but if you have uh people in that range, relatives and so on. Don't rely on the hospital or Myers to respond to you because they will not. They don't have the resources to make a major response right now. But if you bird dog, meaning you check periodically during the day, starting at five A M. In the morning, noon, whatever. There may be certain locations that have vaccine available if you're in the appropriate criteria. Uh the last thing I'll mention on that is that Sam Baydun, Commissioner Baydun presently is holding a town hall meeting on this very subject. And um you might want to look at the tape of that when it's done, the um. My understanding is that Wayne County is not going to use Pfizer anymore but Moderna. Uh because they believe it's more available. Uh how they're going to handle people who got their first shot from Pfizer on a Pfizer and a second shot, can't not be Moderna. Is um beyond me. Um so A F T National has got one of, has one of its staff members devoted exclusively to this issue. And every state is all over the map, you know, no one, no one is coordinated with states to get some kind of uniform arrangement. But their staff person is very effective, she made a very good presentation, I sent it on to President Cavelluna and Laurie, Dr. Gonko. And they might forward it to you, um and I'm hoping to have that individual be able to. Have conduct a Zoom conference uh with the college and the trustees would certainly be invited uh to go over her her findings. The last thing I'll say is one of the observations that stuck with me. Aside from the major ones, is there's a Republican governor, might be Florida, I'm not sure where, who has declared that smoking is a pre-existing condition. Which drives me crazy here, uh although you could relocate to that state, take a couple puffs and go in early, I guess, but at any rate. Uh thank you for your time.
And I'm sure Mr. McDonald that you and President Cavelluna will keep working every single channel that is available to you. Uh and see if we're able to to get quicker responses for the college, so thank you for your work on this. Next item, please.
Yep, uh special consideration of an item, are there any action items on this agenda which board members? Or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the actions below.
Now, my plan was that item number seven is calling for a closed session. We should be able to include that in the vote for the other items, but I would ask uh trustee Mosip for you to read the recommendation for that one. Um so we've got that on the record before we we do a single roll call vote, if anyone would be okay with that idea.
As long as it's technically legal, because we do have to always poll those. So if trustee Mosip reads it so that people are clear about what we're going into closed session for. Because we are going to have a individual roll call vote for all of them, I guess that. I'm hoping we're not.
If we weren't in a virtual environment where we were doing roll call for everything, we would be doing this separately.
Yes.
But since we're already doing a roll call, I thought, let's just see about doing action items one, seven altogether. Um, are there any i- items, though, that anyone would like pulled? All right. Trustee Mosip, then if you can go ahead with uh, the uh, recommended action.
So I will be reading the recommended action and also read action number seven, right?
Yes, what we can do is if there's any discussion, we'll go through a discussion, and then we can read the uh, the recommended action for seven. I think that should be okay.
After the vote?
No, prior to the vote. Well, it would, we would go, move forward with the motion in a, in a second.
Or, and then, and then Trustee Mosip will read that. I just wanna make sure.
Yes.
So move to uh, approve action items numbered one through seven as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support.
So it was moved by Trustee Barry, supported by Trustee McDonald. Is there any discussion on any of the action items? All right, I don't see anyone with their hands up, so we'll be ready to move forward. Trustee Mosip, if you could read the recommended action item number seven, then.
For actual. Action item number seven is calling for a closed session. Recommended action is that we move to approve the Board of Trustees enter into an electronic closed session upon conclusion of the business proportion of this regular meeting in compliance with section eight C of the Open Meeting Act for a strategy session in connection with the negotiations of collective bargaining agreements.
We've already made the motion and have support for this along with every other item. Uh, one thing that I would state is that we will not go into the closed session until we have completed everything else on this agenda. We will come back after we come out of closed session to officially close the meeting. But we don't want anyone else that's participating to kind of be waiting on hold while we are in our other session.
So we're only going to come back to adjourn?
We will return to adjourn.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so if everyone's ready, Trustee Mosip, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Deambrazio.
Yes.
Mr. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mosip, yes. Ms. Petlicoff.
Yes.
Ms. Watts.
Yes.
Chair Thorb.
Yes. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
Anyone getting correspondence? I happened to get a, an item earlier today from the H F C Foundation, as President Cavalluna was alluding to earlier. So funny that of, of all the days that I get that one, it's today. Next.
Board Committee Reports.
I don't believe we've had any committee reports since the start of this year, and the committee structure I sent to everyone a few days ago. I haven't gotten any comment back, so we'll making the announcement of what the committees will be um, at our uh, P twelve retreat this Saturday. Next.
Request for information or future agenda items.
All right, next.
Uh, Board Member Commentary.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Uh, just two things. One is I, I wanted to recognize that we did observe Martin Luther King Day yesterday, which is why we're having a Tuesday meeting instead of a Monday meeting, and I wanted to thank President Cavalluna for his um, what he always does is, is a great job on uh, reflecting on every observance and holiday that we have uh, within our college. And I always enjoy reading them, and I appreciate his um, attention to that, and I, and um, I hope everyone um, took some time uh, especially in today's environment, to consider uh, what those words meant back, lo, those many years ago, uh, when Dr. King was out marching. Uh, and where we're at today and what we're going to be observing tomorrow in a um, new uh, seating of administration in our federal government. So I, I did wanna appre, say I appreciate that. And the other thing is I also wanted to, we um, officially did our ceremonial oath-taking uh, last week at the P twelve, and I just wanted to, once again, for the college community thank um, all of those who voted in, in uh, the November election and um, thank them for their support, and I'm happy it was a nail-biter of an election. But I'm still here for another six years. You're gonna have to put up with me. And I'm happy to do, continue doing service, and I appreciate the confidence that was shown. And I uh, also appreciate um, everyone else who has participated in um, our democratic process. Thank you.
Any other comments? Trustee McDonald.
I just wanna sadly acknowledge the four-hundred-thousand lives that we've lost due to COVID. We just hit that very sad milestone, and I don't know if anyone was able to see or listen to the um, the acknowledgement of that loss at the Capitol tonight with the lighting of the um, the lights to represent.
Yeah.
To represent those lives that we've lost. So I just wanted to make that sad acknowledgement. We are in a bad state. And I do hope that things will get better. I have hope.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I would uh, say thank you to the board for action item number five, and I would welcome my new colleague Yahia Bazi in the math department, and Athelios Tinsley, a plumbing instructor, and Richard Wyka, a campus safety associate. I'm, I'm regretful that I can't see you at our, in our real board meeting. I'd be waving and asking you to stand up in the back if we had that. But I'm still happy to have you on the team, and I'm, I'm, my old job, I'd say, welcome aboard. I hope you enjoy the ride. Um, and then the last thing uh, I'll say is um, I appreciate trustee, I'm sorry, President McDonald um, reminding me to send you all the report that A F T put together on vaccines. I've now sent that to you via email. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, uh, Saturday, January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, P to twelve, Board of Education Retreat, ten A M. Virtually via Zoom, virtually available viewing via the YouTube channel for the district, as well as the Facebook page, facebook.com slash Dearborn Public Schools, and cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel nineteen and WOW Channel fifteen. Next meeting would be Monday, February eighth, twenty-twenty-one, P to twelve, Board of Education Meeting, seven P M. At the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom, following the guidelines of the state law and virtually available live, viewing at the YouTube channel for the district, as well as the Facebook page, facebook.com slash Dearborn Public Schools and cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel nineteen and WOW Channel fifteen. Monday, February fifteen, twenty-twenty-one, H F C Meeting, seven P M via video conference. Details to be determined. Check online at H F C C dot E D U slash board dash meeting dash schedule.
So I am assuming at this time, the board is going to be moved into a breakout room. And then, again, we will come back. We will return to adjourn the open meeting. All right, we're back from our closed session. Uh, at this point, there being no other business before the board, I will move that we adjourn. Everyone have a good evening. We'll see you on Saturday morning.
Good night.